I'd like to call to order the Board of Supervisors meeting on Thursday, August 6, 2020 at 7 o'clock. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag-
The United States of America-
Of America-
And to the republic which it stands-
One nation-
Under God-
Indivisible-
Indivisible-
With liberty and justice-
And justice for all.
May we have a moment of silence for all of our essential workers, healthcare workers, military, all of them on the front lines. Let's say some thoughts and prayers for all the hard work that they've been doing. Okay, at this moment, presentations. Our first presentation tonight will be Adopt a Book presentation by not only our famous Bucks County Recorder of Deeds, Robin Robinson. Robin, the floor is yours. The needs presenter writes-
Thank goodness I have Nicole, you know, to help me through this.
I lost you, Robin. There you are.
Can you see me? Thank you for having me tonight. I'm really, really excited to be here and I'm sorry we can't be in person, but I just am so excited to have the opportunity to present this quick presentation to my Warminster supervisors and all my friends in Warminster. So I've been the Recorder of Deeds since January 2018. And as in life, it is in the Recorder of Deeds office that we don't know what we don't know. And my first couple months in office, I met this wonderful recorder from Blair County, Mary Ann. And Mary Ann told me about her old deed books and about record improvement money. And I came home and I said to the staff, where are our old deed books and what is record improvement money? So here's a picture of our warehouse with our old deed books dating back to 1684. This is located at Alms House and 611. No air conditioning, no heat. And anytime a constituent wants to see a book, the staff would have to go and dig them out. And you can see they're all messed up. They're string tied around them. They were all cut up, which we called guillotined when they were scanned into microfilm to be able to look at and view on the computer. But this is the original record of our county and of our country. And when I saw this, my heart sank. And then I realized, oh no, now this is my responsibility. So Mary Ann told me about this wonderful company called CoFile in Vermont. And I'm just going to tell you about it quick. It used to be a mom and pop operation, was bought by a big company called CoFile. And they specialize in preservation of historic documents. I went up there, I visited, I was able to tag on to another contract from a county in New York. And there we were, off to the races. Now, record improvement money, I want to tell you about really quick, is what I'm using to repair these books. And when I started, the Recorder of Deeds before me had given away our record improvement money to the county. So I went and begged for it back. I was given $250,000 back, and that's where we started. And as you can see, here's the beginning. This is in Vermont. Those are, every picture you see are Bucks County books. So these are our books, tied with string. String's an enemy of paper, but that's how we, the people in the office, tried to keep the pages together. And then you can see on the right side where CoFile was beginning to straighten them out, put them in order, trim the pages. The history of paper, and you can all read this, but I want to emphasize, from 1624 to 1850, paper was made from cotton. So when you see some of this, you're going to know that this is cotton. You know, the old ragman would go around and buy and sell rags and they'd make paper out of it. So anyway, that's what a lot of our books are made out of. They're made out of rags. So here's some old bindings. Just wanted to show you this quick and you can see how delicate the pages are. The other big enemy of paper is tape. We had so much tape in this, our books, it's, that's what really drove the cost up. The tape pulls, thank you for muting, the tape pulls the ink off the paper. This is iron gall ink, so it's really powerful stuff. And in some of our books, you can see how it's rusted. Now, remember, I told you a lot of these books, the paper's made from cotton. So I just wasn't even thinking when I saw this page go into the water. This is a water bath, and all our pages took baths. And I thought, oh my gosh, that ink is going to come right off. But no, it's on cotton. And then our pages were hung to dry on fishing wire. And our more delicate pages, you can see are being, are laid flat. And all those little fragments of paper were put back together, our pages. And then, just like when we dry our clothes in a dryer, we don't want them to be wrinkled. So this is the cockling procedure, where they take this big instrument and they put it on top of our pages to straighten them out. So they'll be beautiful in the, when they're finished. This is a sheet that was placed over by a Recorder of Deeds to try to protect the paper a long, long, long time ago. So one of my main jobs as Recorder of Deeds is maintaining and protecting the record of this county. And that is what this recorder was doing. He thought that he was protecting the record, but we had to get that off. And there's the paste that was left, the residue of the paste, just like when I was a kid. It was that kind of gummy paste that had to be scraped off our pages. We, a lot of our pages had to take a solvent bath to help remove the Scotch tape. And there you can see all the rips. And you know, the people in our office who put tape on the pages, they did not know they were doing something that was going to really hurt the pages. You know, any of us would try to repair a page, but the tape has just been awful. And here's some more tape removal. And I love the tape so much, I've saved it. And you can see the little brown spots, and that's the ink that has been pulled off the pages. But we're lucky because this iron gall ink is so tough that all our pages have been saved and all the documents you can read. Here's the deacidification process. This is some very expensive chemical. It's $400 a gallon. Now, remember, this is being done in Vermont, so everything is extremely environmentally friendly. At least that's what they've told me. So here we are, mending our torn pages, not with tape, but with Japanese linen. So this is Japanese linen with a little heating iron that they heat on the pages. And that is how we have repaired the rips. And when you come in, hopefully you will, and visit us and see the books, you'll be able to see the Japanese linen. But it doesn't, it's not irritating at all. You know, it just blends right in. It's absolutely beautiful. And then when the pages are done, they're put in these Mylar sleeves that are UV protected. You can touch the pages. It's just absolute, they look absolutely fantastic. So on the left is the original book, handmade, and we've kept some of these. And then on the right is what our new books look like, which they're gorgeous. And there we are, our final product. We have 700 of these old deed books. They're going to turn into 1,400 volumes because with the Mylar pages, they become very, very large. They weigh about 22 pounds each, some a little more, some a little less. So I know you're wondering, what are you going to do with those beautiful books? You can't put them back on the floor in the warehouse with no air conditioning and no heat. So because the administration building has been redone, they've given us a storage unit in the old sheriff's department. So here I am, posing with the new books in our new storage facility, which is climate controlled. It's absolutely wonderful and the books are safe there. And CoFile has assured me they're going to last 500 years. And I'm going to hold them to it. Now, where does the money come from for the preservation? Like I said, record improvement money, which is a fee that we collect, $5 with every deed, mortgage, any document. And this is, this is by state law that we do this. So every Recorder of Deeds in the Commonwealth collects a record improvement fee. And it can only be used to improve the record. That's all it can be used for. We can't use it for children and youth, or the pandemic, or anything. Only improving the record. The other way I'm paying for it is with a program called Adopt a Book. And people all over the county have contributed to this program. And I'm really proud to say that Nicole and I have raised over $37,000 in this endeavor to preserve the books of Bucks County. And we're very proud of that. The third way that we're raising money is through grants. And this has been, if you can see on the screen, absolutely fabulous for us. But now with the pandemic, you know, I don't know, you know, how this is going to go going forward. But we received $125,000 federal grant from Save America's Treasures. And the reason we were able to receive this large grant is because we discovered that in our books, we have manumissions. And manumissions are the documents that freed slaves before the Civil War. So they're very, very special. So this is me and Linda Sally, who's the president of the African American Museum of Bucks County. And you'll recognize some of our other great leaders with us from our community. And these are our miscellaneous books that have the manumissions in them. And they have other things too, that went to CoFile and were fixed with the help of this grant. We also just received a $5,000 Pennsylvania state grant. And we're in the process of fixing a couple books with that grant. So here is a quick little overview. We had many, many enslaved people in Bucks County. And Nicole and I do a whole presentation, if anyone's ever interested in seeing it, on the enslaved people of Bucks County. And we just have so many treasures in this office and in the county that, you know, has all this history. Real quick, I just wanted to give you a little kind of interesting thing that we find out in our deed books. This is the Duchess of Luxembourg. And during World War II, she and her government were exiled to Canada when the Nazis marched through. She eventually came down to Bucks County and bought a farm in Middletown Township. It was a working farm, and she used the money that she made from this farm to support her exile government. She traveled the country with Franklin Roosevelt, trying to keep Luxembourg's story alive. So now her house is still there, and her property is Core Creek Park. And Lake Luxembourg is, you know, on her property. And last Christmas, they had her house open for a Luxembourg Christmas. And it's just a really, really cool thing. We do a Did You Know? every week, twice a week, on our Facebook page. And this week, or rather, this week's almost over with the storm. I'm all confused. I think it's Tuesday. Next week, we are going to feature history from Warminster. And this is going to be up on our Facebook. So we do this every week. We're really trying to help people be interested in our books and in the history of our county, which is just, you know, fascinating. We do a lot of genealogy. This is Lynn Barrett in the hot pink shirt. She is our expert. She is our historian. And we're here to help anyone who needs it. We're here to help. The other thing I did this year, and by coincidence, you know, the pandemic happened, but in January, I opened up the deed records. So before January, you could only search online from your house back to 1980 forward. Now you can go all the way back to 1684 and search the treasures of this county from the comfort of your home. Landex does charge a little, a little fee, but this is something that hadn't been done. And because we did this, we are also helping real estate agents and notaries and title companies because they can search from home. They used to have to come in here every day, but now they can do it all remotely. The other thing that I've done, I put into, into our system, this fraud alert. And it's free. And what it really does is protect our constituents against identity theft. I called Landex, who is our vendor, and I said, I saw on television a commercial that for $9.95 a month, this company would protect a person's deed. How is that possible? All our records are public. So it is possible that a company could go look at your records, your deed every week and check it for you. But this is the best that we could do. And like I said, this is free. It's easy to sign up. I did it myself with no help from my daughter. And that was the key. I said, it has to be easy. I have to be able to do it on my own. So bottom line, if anybody, if you're signed up and anybody records anything in our office in your name, you will get an alert either on your texts or on your email. And it's really great, especially for people who are worried. We have some people who are worried about relatives doing something with their names. You know, boom, they'll get the alert. I have a neighbor in Warwick who bought, had a big house in Warrington, paid it off. A few weeks later, he, he announced it to his family, you know, his big family, that he'd paid off his Warrington house and he was going to get all this money from rent. A few weeks later after that, he received papers in the mail that somebody had taken out a second on his house, like a home equity loan. It cost him $100,000 and took two years to clear this up. If he'd been signed up for our fraud alert system, he would have known immediately that something happened in his name. He would have called us and we would have, we would have referred him to the district attorney and things would have gone much, much smoother. So anyway, this is something free for everybody. And then my most important page, my Facebook page, like I said, we're going to feature Warminster next week. So sign up and follow us. And we always try to just communicate good things and, and things that you need to know, like when the county's closed or, you know, bad weather. We, we try to put it out, the word out there for everybody. And there I am. It was William Penn's birthday a year ago, and he came and we gave him a big party. I think he turned 375 years old or something, just ridiculous that I'll never see. But anyway, thank you all so much for letting me come and, and share information about the Recorder of Deeds office.
Mr. Chair, may I make a comment? Mr. Chair, can I make a comment?
You're muted, Ken.
I can't hear you.
Ken, can I make it?
Can anyone hear me?
Now we can.
Yes.
Okay. Well, I had, I had this on, my phone. Um, hold on one second.
We can hear you twice now, Ken. You're echoing.
Yeah, hold on. Let me work on it. How about now?
Sounds good.
Better?
Yes.
Okay.
May I make a comment, Mr. Chair?
Just one second, Kathy. I was actually trying to make a comment and I'll certainly turn the floor over to you. For Robin, great work being done at the Recorder of Deeds. We really appreciate your, everything you're doing there. And I'm a huge history fan. As a matter of fact, I'm looking at three volumes published in, from 1668 to 1868. My father had done a genealogy, traced us back to Ireland and Wales and Germany. And it turns out I have some ancestry here in Bucks County from 1760s, although they were not landowners. So they may have been servants from Ireland. But anyhow, my question was, how much does it cost to restore just one book? It seems to be very expensive.
And it wouldn't be as expensive if someone would have done it sooner. It's the tape, it's the mold, it's the mildew, it's the bugs, it's the string. So they vary. We have all the really expensive ones we are done with. So I have a whole list. But they start, the highest price was $13,000. And now we are at about between $4,200 and $5,000 per book. They really aren't, aren't getting to $5,000 anymore. So we've gotten half of them finished. So the, you know, we started with the oldest first, obviously, and the ones that were in the worst condition. So those are all done, saved, 1684, William Penn's name, everything. It's all saved. So now we're working, you know, our way slowly through, through the rest.
Wow, that's, that's fantastic. Thanks. Thank you very much. Go ahead, Kathy. I'll turn it over to you.
Robin, first of all, we want to thank you for doing an excellent presentation tonight. And we're extremely happy that you're showcasing Craven Hall because that's a historical landmark for us, which we all support. And I've been following your endeavors in the newspaper and in speaking to you. It's quite an adventure you've been on. And you've done a great job of, of conditioning all of those books for future generations. I want to thank you for doing a great job and for being here tonight to explain the process.
Thank you, Kathy. I'm just so excited that I finally got to come and, and visit Warminster, even if it's on the computer.
I'd like to say too, that I found it fascinating, Robin. I felt the whole process was just fascinating. So thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me. And I hope whenever any of you have time, that you'll come in and visit and let us show you the books.
Yes, and I encourage everyone in Warminster to, to sign up. Next week, you said was Warminster Week, correct?
That's right. And I want to tell you one more thing. Last week, Nicole and I did a big historical presentation. It was an hour and a half. So I don't expect everyone to look at it, but it's posted on Facebook. And if you really want to see some historical properties of Bucks County and hear some interesting stories, check it out.
That's great.
And I also encourage people to, to donate to the Adopt a Book. So we can continue to do this great work. Thanks, thanks again, Robin. Fantastic.
Ken, thank you, everyone. I'll get off the meeting. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Have a great evening.
You too.
Bye now.
Okay, I just want to, Tim, we're going to get to you next. However, we, we missed the announcements. The only thing that I have is for public comment, please send your, your, your comment to publiccomment@warminsterpa.org. And then Mr. Schuster will be more than happy to read them. That's the only announcement. Oh, and the other thing is, today I heard some great news in Pennsylvania. It seems that our COVID numbers are going down. So wearing masks and the efforts of all the citizens of Pennsylvania seems to be working, although they're not quite sure why or if it will be sustained. So I encourage everyone also to continue to follow the guidelines. Thank you. Anyone else?
Oh, I'd like to just say that I'm really happy that with this tornado that went through Warminster this week and the part of the hurricane, that we fared as well as we did, that we didn't have any deaths or any horrible accidents, although some people have lost property and had a lot of damage. So I hope that they can recover. But thank God that we didn't have a worse, a worse storm than we had.
Okay, thank you, Judy. Is there anyone else? Okay, well then, with that, we'll turn it over to Mr. Hagie from the Municipal Authority.
Good evening. I'm Tim Hagie. I'm the general manager of the Warminster Municipal Authority. Please present tonight, the Board of Directors has announced that for the next quarterly bill for our customers, the water charge will be zero for all water usage. The, we received a grant from DEP of $2.1 million. And the board has specified that that grant is to be used for rate relief for our customers who have paid additional costs for PFAS contamination. Thanks there to Governor Wolf, State Senator Collette, Representative Stevens, Representative Pollanchok, and our own Megan Schroeder for their help. The, the average resident who uses 15,000 gallons per quarter is going to see a savings of about $78. It's not a lot of money, but it's, it's something. It's a one-time thing for this quarter. The following quarter will have some additional savings. And depending on how much water was used in this quarter, we'll have some additional savings in the following billing quarter. We bill in seven major sections. Section one has bills gone out already. And with that is a letter. And that letter explains the process in a little more detail. And the next section is section two, and that'll be out in a couple of weeks. Again, those bills will go out with $0 for water consumption. The service charge, sewer charges, all, all remain as they are. If, if anyone wants to see that letter, it's currently posted on our website. If they'd like to see that letter, it's been, I've seen it on social media, but it's also, it's also posted on our website. But everybody will receive it with their next regular quarterly bill. That, that was a one-time grant from DEP. In the, in the long-term process, our hopes for a rate relief for our customers lies with a new authority. And the acronym is MIRI, and it stands for the Military Installation Remediation and Infrastructure Authority. It's a new authority centered on, around the Willow Grove Military Base. It's headed up by Horsham for all the administration work. They've done a tremendous job. Mr. Larry Burns there has done a great job putting this together. And we have representatives from Warminster on that authority, Mr. Scott DeRosa and Mr. Tom Panzer, two very capable individuals. And I've got great hope for the MIRI Authority. This one-time grant is a one-time item. This new authority is going to hopefully allow for ongoing rate relief and also to pay for well, private well owners in Warminster to have their well connected, even if they're below the standard that the military was paying for. As long as they have a detection, this authority will allow for reimbursement of those costs. Meter information with the install, the new meters, those new meters have some, some great technology improvements. And one of those improvements is the ability to read the meter more than once every 90 days. That, those new meters have the capability of reading every, every hour and producing a report on hourly usage. And the reason that's important is if people have continuous usage and they don't know it, they can, they can look at the meter reading in the future and see how their usage is through the night. Most people aren't using any water through the night. But if you're seeing water through the night, usage, there's continuous usage going on. Most likely, it's a toilet. It's going to be a nice alert for our customers. That technology improvement is hopefully going to be ready in the first quarter of 2021. There is a fee for that. Whether the fee is going to be as part of the normal cost of business or whether it's going to be a separate fee is yet to be determined. Stormwater work, we are doing some PFAS remediation work in conjunction with the Horsham Air National Guard. The Warminster Authority has a contract with the National Guard to treat stormwater. We're the only stormwater treatment on any of the military bases. So water leaving the base has not been treated stormwater-wise. So water leaving the base has not been treated, uh, uh, stormwater wise. And, um, we're having some great success with, uh, a temporary system. We have a permanent system in design, uh, we've ordered the treatment system. And hopefully by the end of the year, we're going to be remediating, uh, stormwater coming off of that base. Uh, uh, current untreated stormwater, uh, is about five thousand parts per trillion. The standard for drinking water is seventy parts per trillion. So it's very, very important work, uh, that we're helping, uh, with at the Willow Grove Base. For our, our customers here in, in Warmminster, uh, we continue with our aggressive water main replacement project. Uh, we had, I signed a contract today, uh, for new water mains. And those water mains, um, will be, uh, replaced with ductile iron from the current cast iron, the aging cast iron mains. Um, and it's, uh, it's very expensive work, but it's, it's needed and we're just, we're just continually, uh, working section after section of, of the, of the town, working on the worst, uh, lines first. Um, and we'll send all the customers, the property owners of, uh, those roads, uh, affected. We'll be sending them out a letter, uh, very soon. Uh, but briefly, uh, we're going to replace, uh, services, uh, in Ivyland Road from an old cast iron main to a newer, uh, ductile iron main from between York and Murns Road. Uh, we're going to replace the old cast mains in Claire Road and Leopard Lane. Uh, we're going to do work in County Line Road, uh, to replace the water main between Woodland and York Road. On Davisville Road, we have a section that to be replaced that starts near Lilac, uh, continues to Street Road and a portion of Davisville near Overlook. Uh, on Valley Road, uh, we're going to re- replace the water main between Carway and Street Road. Uh, we haven't had the pre-construction meeting yet. Uh, that'll be within the next two weeks. Once we have the pre-construction meeting, we'll have an idea when the contractor is going to start. So we'll be providing that information to those property owners and also on our website and send it into the township. Uh, once these, uh, roads, uh, have new water mains in them, uh, we will, uh, be repaving that and hopefully in, in cooperation with the Township, uh, Public Works Department. And finally, uh, water quality. We send out about ten percent of the water supply to our customers from our own wells. Those wells have treatment systems on and they send out water, non-detect for PFAS. Um, North Wales Water Authority supplies the remaining ninety percent of our water supply. And, uh, last year, um, they had, uh, detections of about six point eight parts and that was the highest, uh, as we reported in our Consumer Conference Report. That's, uh, more than ten times less than the existing advisory level of seventy. But I'm pleased to announce, um, uh, that they've spent, uh, uh, a little more than thirteen million dollars, uh, to replace their media at their, uh, water treatment facility. And the last two monthly reports have shown non-detect. So water now in Warmminster was very, very low, uh, for PFAS. Uh, but now I'm pleased to say that all water going to all customers is at, uh, non-detect. I would be happy to answer anybody's questions if anybody has any questions for me.
I have a question. Uh, thank you for your phenomenal presentation. Uh, my husband is now doing the happy dance that he has a zero water bill. I'm sure all the residents are very, very happy with that important news. Uh, I would like to ask, uh, the remediation that you're doing in Willow Grove, uh, is the WMA Municipal Authority receiving compensation for that remediation?
Yes, we, uh, all the cost for that work is being reimbursed by, uh, the A- Air National Guard contract.
That's great, Tim. Thanks for the update. Um, it's, it's great to see the, um, Municipal Authority doing a great job with the infrastructure. Um, it's always been, um, my belief that the WMA does a great job maintaining a fantastic infrastructure, which is one of the reasons why everybody wants our water and sewer system. So, uh, great job, it's a fantastic asset. Um, and we look forward to, uh, some more updates and working with you in the future. Thanks very much, Tim. Anyone else have anything, any comments?
Thank you all.
I think it's phenomenal what they're doing. What they've been doing, I think, is outstanding. And I for one appreciate it.
Thank you, Tim.
Tim, we appreciate you. And so do the residents.
Okay, so I guess we can move on, uh, to land use matters. So, uh, Greg, I guess we'll turn it over to you.
Uh, thank you, actually over to the solicitor who can, uh, take us through, uh, the, the three land use matters, uh, on the, uh, agenda for this evening.
Okay, very good.
Give me a second, I'm bringing everybody in for Aldi right now.
Okay. I hope this doesn't affect my, affect my bandwidth again. I'm struggling and there must be quite a few people over here streaming videos or movies. Uh, I've been in and out, so, um, forgive me.
That's all right, Ken, I got your back.
All right, thank you.
Hey Josh, Greg, are you okay?
Yes, can you hear us Amanda?
Yes, I can hear you. Josh, are you good? Let's give you, uh, presenter rights right now, too. Greg, are you okay?
Yes, can you hear us Amanda?
Very faint. All right, Josh, you should be able to share your screen when you're ready.
Sounds good, thank you.
And Amanda, if you'd tell us, would you like us to just launch into it or is there any?
Uh, Scott can do his startup or whatever and then he, uh, queue you from there.
Okay, very good.
All right, so first matter we have before you and the board, uh, is the land development matter at two sixty East Street Road. If you would recall that earlier this year, uh, the team came in for a sketch plan presentation. It was either February, March, I'm not too quite sure, all the months lead together now with the pandemic. But, uh, this was the Aldi Chase Bank Plan that was going on the corner of Street Road and Newtown Road. Um, the vacant lot that's been like that for some time now. Uh, so at this time I will allow, uh, the development team to take over, show you what they've done, show you any updates, how they incorporated your comments from the last time into the presentation. So I'll turn it over to Josh and Greg now.
Thanks Scott, uh, this is Greg Davis from the Saul Ewing Law Firm. And as, as Scott said and Amanda said, Josh Sewell from Dynamic Engineering is with me as well. Um, a little bit of background, um, in terms of the procedure and what we've been up to since we saw you in February. In May, we had a hearing before the zoning hearing board and the zoning hearing board granted several variances related to, uh, the location of the bank drive-through, the stacking distance of the drive-through lanes for the bank and the signage on the Chase Bank building. And then just last week, we appeared before the planning commission. And the planning commission, uh, unanimously recommended approval, uh, of our plan and our waivers, thirteen waivers, subject to compliance with township review letters, which we're comfortable with. Um, so tonight we are before you seeking approval of a preliminary final land development plan. And so, uh, I thought we'd have Josh walk you through, do at a high level, walk you through the plans and then we're here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks Greg, and I just want to check, can you guys see my screen, um, with the plan yet?
I can't yet, Josh, it's Greg.
We lost Josh.
I think he's logging in and out again. He's never had issues with this before, so this is a, the first. He's done really well in the last two presentations.
He was the A student, I don't know what happened.
I know. I'll be right back in a second.
There's be something in the air, Ken's got the issues, he's got, gee Ken, it's not just you.
Happy to hear that. Well, actually unhappy to hear that.
Happy it's not me this time. It's usually me that has a problem with it.
About that everybody, can you now see the, uh, screen before you?
Yep, yes. Thanks Josh.
Perfect, again, apologize for that. So, uh, jumping very quickly in, uh, following up on Greg. Uh, so the plan before you was a site plan rendering. Uh, if we can remember back to the, uh, sketch plan meeting that we had a few months ago, uh, probably was not as detailed, but the plan has essentially stayed the same. Uh, it's looking at the redevelopment of the corner of Street Road and Newtown Road, looking at a approximately twenty thousand square foot Aldi grocery store and approximately three thousand square foot Chase Bank with drive-through facility. Uh, driveways are both on Street Road and Newtown Road. As Greg mentioned, we've been through the zoning hearing board, we've been through the planning commission as well as PENDOT, uh, multiple times for the signal improvements and roadway improvements that we'll be doing here. Uh, this plan is the site plan, will relate onto the landscape plan, uh, and rendered obviously for tonight's presentation. Essentially here to answer any questions that, uh, the board supervisors. Um, but, but it's been a, a few month process, but it's been going very well now and, um, happy to answer any questions.
Question Josh, uh, first I'd like to say welcome to Aldi because a lot of our residents were very upset when Aldi had moved to Warringtons. And that corner property, I live, uh, right around the corner, uh, on the corner of Street and Centennial. So Street Newtown's right around the corner and that property has been dilapidated for years. So it's going to be a really nice asset on that piece of property and it looks beautiful. I love all the greenery that's, uh, around the building also.
Thank you.
Great job, thank you.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any big questions. I see, um, your, your buffers look, um, reasonable. And then this in the back, is that, uh, stormwater management where all those trees are in the, in the, uh, I get, would that be the southwest corner?
Uh, the, correct, the southwest corner where our residents are surrounding this unique property is actually all, uh, existing trees and new planted trees. Our stormwater basin is actually located right next to the Aldi loading dock area.
Okay. Anyone else have any, uh, questions?
I just wanted to add, it's great to have a bank in Aldi right there and to have that corner developed so beautifully. It's going to be a nice asset. Thank you.
Thank you. It has been a long time coming, uh, since I moved in here twenty-five years ago. That's been a vacant, um, uh, just vacant lot and, um, it's nice to see something go in there that the residents, um, can use, especially on this side of the township. Thanks very much. Uh, any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll just jump in, um, our, this is our second review letter and before you have, uh, a resolution that Scott's going to go through, um, it is preliminary final. Uh, we do support that, know that's, uh, sometimes not appropriate for a job of this size, but, um, the applicant and their professionals work very closely with the township staff, uh, engineer and solicitor's office. So we are comfortable, worked out all the significant issues there, pretty far along with all their outside agency approvals. Um, there is one fee in lieu of, uh, for trees. I'd like, like we've done in the past, just handle at administrative level. Um, I have been trying to work with the applicant on finalizing a fee in lieu of that's referenced in their letter. Uh, they have so many trees and buffer plannings that they can't fit it all on the site. And, uh, per ordinance, uh, they've requested to pay a fee in lieu of the remainder. Uh, we are comfortable with, uh, that. In fact, I can't recommend any more, any more landscaping on the site. So, um, we will work that out staff level like we've done in the past. And I believe I heard the attorney say that they have no other comments or concerns. So, uh, it's ready for your consideration as a preliminary, conditional preliminary final.
Thanks Craig, because that was, um, it, it, I, that was one of my questions to, uh, to bring you in here and ask because I did see that in fee of lieu of in, in the, uh, in the letter. Um, and, uh, I know that you guys have been working, um, closely with, with Aldi. So, um, uh, so with that, I guess, um, what's, uh, the next, uh, move here, uh, Mr. Schuster?
I have one more comment, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to say to, um, to Craig, our engineer and Randy Flagren Associates, uh, you've done a phenomenal job, uh, as professionals, working on this project to make it come to fruition. And it's going to be a, a beautiful, uh, site on that property. And I'm very, very happy, I'm sure the residents will be very happy with it too. Thank you so much for all your help.
Okay, thank you, anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to say that, um, you know, I talked to a lot of people in that area. That was one of the big complaints last fall when I talked to people that, about that spot and how, what a mess it was and how it brought down the neighborhood. And there's, I think people will be very happy to see this done.
Okay.
With the, being no other questions, uh, just real quick, uh, Greg, did you and your team have a chance to review the resolution on to, for tonight?
We did, took a look at it this afternoon Scott and we're comfortable with it.
And you'll be willing to sign and agree to the terms within the ten day period as it requires?
Yes, sir.
All right, well then, at that time, Mr. Chair, uh, if there's no more questions, no more concerns, uh, a motion to grant conditional and preliminary and final land development approval would be appropriate at this time.
I'll move.
Okay, thank you, uh, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, uh, any other comment, questions? Did you, did I, did I lose everyone?
Yes.
Okay, so there's no questions or comments, any comments Greg from the public?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we have no comments from the public.
Okay, so with that, um, I'd like to call the question. Uh, Kathy?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, the motion carries four zero. Thanks very much and good luck, uh, it looks great. Um, we hope, uh, we wish you great success with the project.
And just for clarification, that was that motion to approve everything under land development or just the first resolution? Scott, do they need to do each one individually or was one motion enough?
My motion was for the first resolution.
The motion for the resolution should take care, should take care of the agreements as well.
Right.
And the HOP authorization, because there is a second resolution, we'll need a second resolution for the, uh, uh, Resolution twenty twenty, twenty-seven, uh, regarding TE one sixty.
Okay, thank you.
Resolutions, we'll need two motion.
So that, the first motion was on the Resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-six, that has just passed. So the next thing would be for someone to make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-seven, which is the, uh, TE one sixty, a traffic application.
Motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, uh, any other questions or comments? Okay, being done, we'll call a question, um, Kathy?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, motion carries four oh. Thanks very much.
Thank you everybody.
Success. Thank you all.
Thank you guys.
Thanks Amanda, thanks for everything Amanda, appreciate your help.
You're welcome, I'll send over stuff tomorrow that needs to get signed.
Okay. Perfect, thank you, thanks Scott, thanks Craig.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you everybody. Thanks very much, have a great evening.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks very much. Have a great evening.
You too.
Okay, Scott. Moving on.
Do we have the next team in yet or are we waiting?
I just invited them all back. So they just need to log, finish connecting.
Okay.
Yep. So, so while they're logging in, this is a waiver of land development at 606 York Road. It is for the installation of a walk-up Bank of America ATM. It's Resolution 202028. That's going to be tough to keep saying, but like I said, this is, this is a small project. Once the team is in, they can explain it, but it's not a big one. Waiver of land development, the engineer felt was appropriate. So we'll go from there once they're ready.
Okay, Paul, you should be able to share your screen for any presentation stuff that you need.
All right, great. Thank you, Amanda.
You're welcome.
Hey, Matt, we can't hear you. Because we have some audio issues with our attorney.
He's had issues before. Usually can fix them.
Yeah, seems like a sharp guy.
Hey, Matt, just nod up and down if you will comply.
Good. Problem solved.
Yeah, exactly.
Paul, do you want to go ahead and just get started?
Okay, you guys can hear me now?
Yes, Matt, yes.
The right setting. Is that better? Okay, so I think as everyone noted, this is Warminster Plaza intersection of Street Road and York Road. I think everyone's issue that we're talking about here. This is a proposed Bank of America ATM, a walk-up ATM. We've submitted for a waiver of land development. We've gotten recent review letters from Gilmore on July 31st, 2020. We are generally a will comply. I think all of the items that are still listed in pretty minor.
Matt, we lost you again.
Yeah, I can, I can just run you guys through the, through the proposal quickly. Go that route. All right.
There we go.
Yeah, there we go. So just a brief overview. This is a row of five existing parking spaces closest to the entrance on, I guess, the southernmost corner of this site. We're going to be removing two of those parking spaces to establish the ATM as well as add a little bit of green space and an ADA ramp and then convert one of the spaces to an ADA access aisle and provide an ADA parking space that's intended to be used by the ATM, but none of the, the three parking spaces that are left over are dedicated or anyway signed specifically for the bank, but we would assume that most people using these spaces would use it for the ATM. There is a new restaurant going next door, Page Right. That will be in somewhat proximate to this, but this is really the, the remote spaces of the parking lot. It's a great location for this ATM. It'll kind of really fit well as in the shopping center. So relatively minor improvements. We have a few new lights going in that are going to be focused for, for ATM security. We've made some reductions to the overall light levels based on the comment letter and that, that plan set was resubmitted. Essentially, we dropped those really max values that were the concern by, by roughly 30% by just kind of adjusting some of the mounting heights of the lower lights. So overall, a benefit for the lighting from the original proposal, where it will comply generally with, with the, with the review letters. And then I know there was, there was a comment about how the ATM is going to, is going to look. So I wanted to just quickly bring that up as well, so everybody can kind of see what's going on. Are you seeing the ATM right now?
Yeah.
Yep. So this ATM, I mean, in comparison to the other, the other buildings in the shopping center and, and the restaurants that'll be going in in the future, it's extremely small. It only stands about nine and a half feet tall, roughly four and a half feet wide. It's even smaller than some of the, some of the freestanding signage that you'll see for the shopping center. So it's intended to be used by customers within the shopping center. The, the signage that you see on the front and back is, is really intended for people that are in close proximity of the ATM. And then obviously it's branded for Bank of America. That red color and the white is their new brand and, and the logo and, and the lettering is all part of their new branding scheme. And it actually fits pretty well with the new restaurant, the nifty 50s that's going to be coming through in the, in the near future. It's just a kind of a red and white scheme that matches that as well. So it'll be almost not noticeable in the shopping center, but just noticeable enough for Bank of America's interest to have people utilize the ATM and, and get that convenience for their customers without any real major impacts to the shopping center operations or anything of that nature. So if there's any questions or anything you'd like to be elaborate a little bit further on, I'd be glad to. And the floor is yours.
Agree with you, Paul, that it's a great addition to that shopping center. And I think it will fit in with the, with the rest of the landscape surrounding it. So great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have no questions or comments.
No questions?
Questions?
Okay, so I guess, Scott, what, what with the motion?
Yeah, in this case, real quick. Matt, has your team been able to review the draft resolution for this evening?
Yes, we have.
And you're good with the conditions? You'll be willing to sign and abide by the terms?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And in this case, Mr. Chair, the matter submitted to you is ready for approval, ready for a vote on Resolution 2028, 202028, excuse me, approval of the waiver of land development application for the ATM.
Okay, so is there a motion?
I'll move.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Any questions or comments? Greg, is there any questions or comments from the public?
No public comment, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so being none, we'll call a question. Kathy?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion carries four zero. Thanks very much. And it looks like we're, we're making headway there at that, that one spot with the nifty 50s, which maybe, well, hopefully is coming soon and some other improvements. So thanks very much.
Thank you.
Well done with the technology, too.
It's been challenging tonight.
Yeah, no, it went off without a, without a flaw. No, good job, guys.
Thanks.
Have a good night.
Thank you. You too. Enjoy the evening. Okay. Last but not least. Scott, we'll turn it over to you.
Last land development. Nope, apologies. The last land development item is for 1020 West Bristol Road. This is the Mara 2 development, if you recall. They were in front of you for final approval at your June meeting, which you granted. It's a, a office complex construction. We're just cleaning up and finishing up some stuff here, like with the Aldi development on Street Road. You know, Bristol Road is also a PennDOT road, so they require a stormwater. Well, they don't require the stormwater indemnification agreement. They require the applicants to apply for a HOP permit for the stormwater facilities. But PennDOT rules and regulations make municipalities where the development is taking place co-responsible. So the indemnity, indemnity agreement, excuse me, is to allow the property owner, the developer to take responsibility for the stormwater management systems and they'll be the primary responsible party. So you have that agreement in before you right now, as well as the HOP application. Both of those items can be approved with one motion.
Okay, so is there a motion?
I'll move. I move for approval.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments? Any comments from the public, Greg?
No, Mr. Chairman, no comments.
Okay, so being no comments or questions, we'll call the question. Kathy?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion carries four zero. Thanks very much. Okay, we'll move on to public comment. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Schuster. Greg?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Prior to the meeting this evening, we received two comments, which I had prior to forward out to the board. The first one is from Carol Forman, 57 Villa Drive. She writes, "Our home assessments are too high in Villas of Five Ponds. My school taxes are 30% higher than I paid living in Holland, PA. We are senior citizens, some on fixed income, and pay high school taxes, but no cap in sight. We are not allowed to use the school system for our grandchildren. Please, I'm not sure what this is, but please keep power and cap school taxes for seniors. I don't get a pension, so I'm not thrilled funding someone else's pension. Seniors don't burden the schools with their children in 55-plus communities. Why burden us with high taxes? Seniors need reasonable home assessments. They're also a large group that votes." And the next comment is actually two comments from the same person, from Kelly Tooman of 1459 Devon Road. And the question is, can some explain what synchronous classes or learning really is? And follow up on that. Will kids be able to log in and have live instruction for each of their classes, at least for a portion of the period? If not, what is the plan? Because the board members did not answer the question. Obviously, both these comments were meant for the school board, but because they came in through the advertised method, I'm reading them out loud. We have already forwarded them over to the school district.
Okay, thanks, Greg, and, and thank you for your comment. I'm sorry they didn't go to the right board. But we, Greg, you said you had forwarded them the, the proper lines of communication?
Correct. Forwarded to staff over at the, the school.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, consent agenda. I guess we'll turn it back over to you, Greg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The consent agenda for this evening is as follows. Item A is approval of your minutes from your July 9th meeting. Item B is a Centennial School District multipurpose grass field at 433 Centennial. This would be release number four, the final for escrow in the amount of $5,000 as recommended by the engineer. Item C is Street Road Industrial Park, lot number 17, release number two from escrow in the amount of $63,428.40 as recommended by the engineer. Item D is payment number one for the 2020 curb ramp installation contract to NJS Concrete in the amount of $186,923.90 as recommended by the engineer. Item E is payment one final for the 2020 roadway milling contract to Roden Mill in the amount of $77,636.40 contingent upon receipt of the original copies of all closeout documentation as recommended by the engineer. Item F is approval to advertise the 2021 to 2023 mowing and turf maintenance RFP. This will be a three-year bid for mowing and turf maintenance of township facilities and land. The current contract will be coming to a close at the end of this year. Item G is approval of a MOU with Centennial School District. This is a biannual agreement that is held between Centennial School District and municipalities, which provide law enforcement services to the district, so that it is clear what, who is responsible for what actions. Item H is a memorandum of understanding with a woman's place. A woman's place provides victims assistance to local police departments. This is a memorandum of understanding that we do regularly. Item A is approval agreement with Four Up for Five Ponds point of sale system. This is the transaction system that they want to use. They currently use a system called T-Snap. However, that company, from what I understand, is failing. So they have gone and done some research and I believe this is actually a better product and less expensive. So they want to switch to Four Up. Item J would be a modeling update agreement with PFM. In the past, PFM has produced budget models for us, so that as we look out five years, we could project what our expenses are going to be against our revenues and start doing some longer-term planning. This would be an agreement that would actually go for five years. So every year they would go ahead and do a refresh of the, of the budget model. They're also going to make a decent discount by doing a five-year agreement. And we are looking at rolling this into a financing opportunity that's coming on because it's part and parcel with that. Item K is a right-of-way relinquish agreement on Lewis Drive. There's a small bump out there, which the adjacent property owner would like to have. Enjoy that property. And item L is approval of a document recognizing Warminster Fire Department Equipment Financing. Warminster Fire Company does, or is in the process of purchasing an apparatus in order to take advantage of certain tax advantages. They would like us to sign off on this document, which is really just saying that they service the township. It is not obligating us financially in any way. That's the consent agenda for this evening.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the entire consent agenda.
Yeah, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, are there any questions or comments? Questions or comments? Greg, any comments from the public?
No public comment.
Okay, so being none, we will call the question. Kathy?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The motion carries four zero. All right, moving on to the financial report. Greg, who's going to do that this month? Because I know
Yep, that's, that's the treasures report for Mary.
Okay, so I'm making the recommended motion, the motion to approve the supplemental bill listed July 31st, 2020 in the amount of $1,055,254.87. And the bill last dated July 16th of 2020 in the amount of $1,311,133.51.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second? I think you're muted, Kathy.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments on the, on the motion? Greg? From the public?
No.
Okay.
No public comment.
Okay, so being none, we'll call the question. Kathy?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion carries four oh. Okay, second part, the June draft financial statement.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you all have a copy of the draft financials for June. We are still in the process of closing the books from 2019. That's going to be done very shortly. We're very anxious to go ahead and finish up the audit there. Additionally, we're planning catch-up on closing out each additional month. The interim finance director, Mr. Weiser, has been doing a fantastic job. Unfortunately, every time he picks up, you know, a rock or something, he finds something else underneath it. So he's been plowing through that. So that's that'll be very helpful in the near future. I do just want to take a second to talk a little bit about where we're going to end up at, you know, as we approach the end of the year. If the board recalls, a budget was passed that had 19 mils worth of expenditures, but only taxed at a rate of 14 mils. There is things in the works right now to hopefully recruit some of that money and fill that gap. But what's happening right now with the pandemic and the slackening of a lot of our revenues that we are seeing a major tightening. As we approach the end of the year, things are going to become very tight and cash flow is Uh, cash flow is, uh, it could become critical. Now, we do have some levers that we can pull, uh, and some, uh, some methods that we can go ahead and use, uh, to ensure some measure of cash flow. I just want to make sure the board is aware, uh, with the previous precarious position that we've been in, coupled with, uh, what's going on with the pandemic, uh, that as we approach the end of the year, absent any other, uh, revenues coming in, uh, there's, there, there is concern about our cash flow. Uh, that being said, uh, everyone knows there has been a subcommittee meeting, uh, looking at getting, uh, a cash flow in, additional cash flow, additional revenue in, and for this year to go ahead and alleviate that. But I just wanted to make sure the board and the public is aware, uh, of the trajectory that we're on right now.
Just I have a question. On the, uh, the COVID nineteen cost to the township. We did send in a reimbursement to the county, but that's not guaranteed we're going to get any, any monies back. Is that correct?
Um, I'm, I, it's not really guaranteed, but I'd also say it's not, it's, it's almost irrelevant. Um, our COVID nineteen expenses are fairly minimal. Um, the biggest impact is simply the loss of revenue, whether it be business privilege tax, mercantile tax, earned income tax, those are things that are really impacting us. Uh, things that are reimbursable, uh, are things like, uh, masks and face shields and uh, changes that we've put in place at facilities, uh, and it just doesn't amount to a, a ton of money. Uh, that's different, I would say, the county, where the county with their health department and some of their activities, uh, does have a lot more expenses than, than we do. Uh, but we will get re, I'm, I'm certain we will get reimbursed, um, but it is not a lot of money.
You, Mr. Schuster.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, thank you, Greg. Um, I just want to add that, um, we take this, um, situation we're in and the situation we were left with when we took office very seriously. Um, so the subcommittee, um, which I'm a part of and Mary's a part of, is moving forward. Um, we've spoken to all our, uh, senators in Washington. Um, we've, we've reached out to our state representatives, um, and we're in the process of speaking with the county um, about the, um, the loss of revenues due to the COVID, uh, pandemic. And, um, and we also, uh, are just about, um, um, we're, we're working on finalizing the long-term plan, which is, is, is not a quick fix. And it's not going to happen overnight. We will have a long-term plan that takes us out fifteen, twenty years and keeps the township on financially stable ground. Uh, Mr. Schuster and his staff have been doing a fantastic job. Uh, Mary and I are participating actively in that. Um, and there's a lot of moving parts. And I believe, uh, by the end of the year, we, we should have, um, we will, we'll have to, we will have um, some short-term relief and some long-term relief as well. Um, but that, but that process is going to take more than, um, you know, we inherited, uh, quite a mess, and, um, this is not going to be something that, um, is fixed overnight. Um, as again, we, I said, this is going to be a long-term financial solution, and that's what the township residents deserve. Um, and that's what, uh, we plan to deliver. So, so thank you, Mr. Schuster. Uh, I believe everyone on the board is well aware of what's going on. I know I've spoken to them personally. Um, so, uh, thanks for the update.
You're welcome.
Okay, uh, unfinished business. I don't believe we have any unfinished business. Um, new business? No new business? Okay, so we'll move along to, uh, professional reports, uh, Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You all have my written report if you have any questions. Uh, a few things that I will go ahead and, uh, mention. Um, of course, uh, the pandemic is still forefront of everyone's mind. Uh, I will echo some of the things that were said earlier. We have seen quite a bit of success in Pennsylvania. That doesn't mean everyone should let their guard down, uh, wear your mask, do the social distancing, taking care of all the precautions that we've been, uh, we've been doing so far. Uh, we are in a very stable situation. Every time that I'm on a call with the, uh, county health director, uh, he is very pleased with what's, uh, he sees. Uh, the contact tracing has been effective, uh, so just everyone should keep on doing what they're doing. Uh, and hopefully, um, you know, things will loosen up in the future and the vaccine will come out. Uh, but in the meantime, uh, Bucks County, I, I think is doing a, a very good job. Uh, the next thing I want to talk about or just mention, just a big thank you, um, to Planet Fitness. Uh, I think most of you are aware that, uh, over at Safety Town, uh, all of the street signs were stolen, about eleven of them. Uh, we had a lot of outpouring from the community because that is really a destination for a lot of kids. Uh, Planet Fitness stepped up and they volunteered to replace, uh, all the signs. I just want to thank Planet Fitness, uh, quite a bit. Uh, and even, you know, even in times like this, when we know that Planet Fitness must be hurting, uh, with, with, uh, the pandemic and for them to step up and make this donation, uh, is, is fantastic. And there's been lots of others, uh, you know, other businesses and individuals that routinely, uh, step up and help out. So I just wanted to thank them for, for doing that. Uh, and lastly, I just want to, uh, you know, give a quick update on the storm. Um, Public Works has pretty much cleaned up everything that they had to clean up. Uh, last time I checked, uh, we were under five percent for power outages. Uh, and a conference call yesterday, Pico had a goal of having eighty percent restored yesterday in Bucks County, ninety percent today, and a hundred percent, uh, by the end of Sunday. Uh, so they're making rapid progress. Uh, we did experience, uh, some very localized flooding. Uh, we did have at least one water rescue. We had a few other issues that fire departments, uh, had to deal with. So thank you to all the volunteers, uh, who went out in some very nasty conditions, uh, and, uh, and did what they had to do. And a final reminder is, uh, when things like that, uh, occur, which isn't that often that we see that amount of rain in such a short period, uh, don't drive into flooded areas. Uh, I personally witnessed people doing, uh, really, um, unwise things. Uh, when you, you know, looking at a road and it looks more like a river, you don't want to cross that. Uh, and unfortunately, some people just don't, uh, just don't understand that. Uh, so that's my, uh, my word of caution. Please just turn around, find another way. That's it for my report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schuster, and, um, I did receive a couple, uh, emails um, about some, um, serious flooding issues in a few parts of the township and, um, uh, Craig, I'll be reaching out to you a little bit and, uh, and Greg as well. Um, just to, just to follow up, um, so I can let the residents know, um, what, if anything, we can do. Um, so, thank you. Uh, okay, so, um, we'll move on. Uh, Scott, solicitor's report?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, our report for the month of June is in with your packet that was delivered to you. If you have any, uh, general questions, I can answer them now. Or any sort more serious matters we can discuss, we can do it offline. Or if related to litigation, we may be able to schedule an executive session in the future to discuss any issues they have. If there's any quick questions, I can take them now.
I have no questions.
No questions.
And just with that, we would like to, you know, echo what Mr. Schuster had said with regards to the pandemic and keeping your guard up and following the protocols, and it seems to be working here in Pennsylvania. Uh, we used, you know, we were starting to have a little bit of growth again, but in the last week, our number down. So that's been great. And also some with regards to the flooding, uh, by my house, I live along Perkyum Creek up into Pen Ridge area. We had to have someone extracted from the vehicle along the creek and tried to drive through. By the end, their car was entirely submerged. Uh, they got out prior to that. Again, it, it's dangerous and it also diverts resources. I mean, there's trees that fall down, there's other serious flooding that can happen. You see a flooded road, drive the other direction. Uh, I mean, it was probably ten feet deep at the end. By, once it got as high as it could, it, it was a pretty deep place to be, so be safe, be careful. Thank you.
Yes, it's been said so many times, um, you would think that everyone would have that information and heed it at this point. Uh, okay, engineers' report, Mr. Kenner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have our August, uh, engineers' report, just a few highlights. Uh, your twenty twenty paving program, we're down to, uh, punch list items for your curb, uh, ramp program. So curb ramps are done and we're working on the punch list, um, with the contractor and, uh, your staff at Public Works. Uh, the milling contract is also done and you approved that final payment tonight. Uh, so that should all be wrapped up and, uh, we just hit August, so that's, uh, that's, that's really good. Um, and I think everybody's real happy with how things turned out. Uh, the other highlight, uh, the big one, of course, uh, your next meeting, uh, you will consider, we opened the bids for the Warminster Community Park projects, the two grants, and at your September meeting, um, uh, you'll be considering, uh, awarding those bids. Right now, uh, the staff is working out and reviewing, uh, the three bidders and qualifications and, um, uh, meeting the requirements of the responsible contractors ordered. So, uh, once that's finalized, then you will, uh, uh, be discussing that at your next meeting. Uh, that's all the comments, uh, comments I have. I'll entertain any questions.
Okay, any questions for Craig?
Good job, Craig. No, no questions.
Thank you.
Yeah, no questions.
Yeah, thank you, Craig. Okay. Township manager announcement of upcoming agenda items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Kenner, during discussed Warminster Community Park, as we go through those bids, we should, we have some action there. Um, the, there is really nothing else major on specifically for the September agenda. However, as we get into the fall, um, we will be discussing financial matters, including the twenty twenty-one budget. But as of right now, nothing else scheduled for the September meeting. I would note that the September meeting is currently scheduled for September third. Uh, we don't have to discuss it now, but I just want to make sure at some point, uh, keeping in mind that, that's right before the Labor Day weekend, uh, that the board members will still be around. So if there's any conflicts with that, uh, please let me know. We could talk about, uh, rescheduling if we have to.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, all right, our second round of public comment.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just received one comment. It is from Joey Capozzi, five thirty Penrose Lane. Uh, says, good evening to all. I am happy our board supervisor meetings are still able to be televised. It's very difficult for the general public to comment on any particular issue as it is being discussed. There's just not enough time to email questions or comments, and it's impossible to have a conversation about anything. I'm wondering if any thought has been given to holding the public meetings in a larger venue where there can be more interaction. Perhaps one of our businesses could offer the use of their facility once a month or some other alternative. Thank you for your thoughts.
Okay, thank you very much for your comment. We will certainly take that under consideration. There's, um, this board, um, welcomes all and, and every comment. And, uh, so we'll, we'll, we'll move forward and we'll see, uh, we'll, we'll see what we can do. It's, uh, unusual times here and, um, you know, we'll have to, uh, we're experiencing things like no other time in history, so, um, thank, thank you. We'll take that under consideration.
And there are no further comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, okay, so, uh, we're moving along supervisors' comments. Anyone?
Oh, some comments, Mr. Chair. I would like to wish my husband Bob a very happy birthday today. And I would also like to say, please complete your census forms, and there are, uh, residents in this township that are trained to be government census. Uh, they go to the doors, and actually, my son is one of the folks that's going around in Warminster doing the census, so be nice to him. And also enjoy the rest of your summer and do it safe. Continue to wear your mask, social distance, wash your hands. We're doing it right, folks. Let's keep doing it. That's it, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to say I think the Warminster residents have done a phenomenal job at the boards during this pandemic, and, um, it's been very difficult when everybody and I, I, I know that people are frustrated with a lot of it and, um, going back to school. Now they've just announced that there will be virtual teaching until Thanksgiving. And students are frustrated and parents are frustrated and there's a general feeling of, I, I like people aside from the pandemic and the health issues to look out for the mental health issues that are involved in this whole pandemic. There's a lot of depression, there could be a lot of, uh, there, um, drug use, I understand is up. We still have the push, the pusher program. People can call two one five, three four five, three seven eight four if they see any, um, drug activity and they want to push out the pusher. It's still important. Um, kids are going stir crazy. I've heard from my, uh, young teenage grandchildren that there's a, there's been a lot of cyberbullying. People should understand that cyberbullying is against the law and they should deal with it instead of just pretending that it's nothing, you know? Uh, because it leads to more depression of children. Children get pretty down about not being able to socialize with their friends, so. Um, just want people to keep this in mind and have a good summer, the rest of the summer. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. I have one question for Mr. Schuster before we do the rest of the comments. Is that okay?
Sure, certainly.
Okay, uh, Mr. Schuster, I noticed that, uh, on up, upcoming meetings, uh, for the Board of Supervisors, it's listed Thursday, August twenty, twentieth to be determined. Are we having that meeting on that date?
Uh, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that now, that's per our normal pattern, that is canceled. The August twenty meeting is canceled.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary, any comments?
Yes, again, um, I would like to thank, um, all the employees of the township for the excellent job they have done during the storm this past week in keeping everybody safe. Um, and in regards to safeness, please remember to practice social distancing and wearing our masks and washing our hands. And enjoy the, the nice warm weather while it's still around, um, prior to going back to school and work. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mary, and, um, uh, my comments will be brief, uh, just enjoy the remaining parts of the summer, be safe. Um, everything we do here in the township, um, we want first priority is the safety of our employees and everyone and the staff and the supervisors and the residents. Um, so with that, um, have a great rest of the summer and, uh, we'll see you in September. So, um, with that, a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Thank you, everyone. Have a.